Are we going to call this meeting to order at 7:05 PM? We're here to meet tonight to discuss the finalists for interviews for the new superintendent for 2021 school year.
Yeah, it's weird because it's
Oh, you don't have a gender for me?
Yeah.
Think of what to
And to prepare the questions.
And to prepare the questions. So I guess I'll hand over to Dorothy.
Okay.
Now to begin.
Okay. Do you want to see the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to hand around packets. So I am here to tell you about the results of the work of the screening committee. First of all, to thank the screening committee for their hard work. They really put a significant amount of time and effort into their interviews and their discussions, and it was a great committee to work with. So first of all, thank them. As a result of their discussions, there are three candidates that they're recommending moving forward as finalists. The first one is Mary Beth Banyos. She's the current superintendent in, make sure I get it right, Windsor Central Supervisory Union in Vermont. She's been there since 2017. She would like to relocate back to Massachusetts. The vast majority of her career is in Massachusetts. She was the Assistant Superintendent in Shrewsbury and in Maynard prior to going to Vermont. She's been an elementary principal in Harvard and Shrewsbury, instructional coach and a teacher in Reading and in Beverly. Just to let you know, since you're not familiar with Vermont districts, the supervisory union is seven towns that came together within the past, within her tenure there, to create one district, and it's an 18-member school committee that she works with. And just in full disclosure, as this process has unfolded, there has been, as our search has unfolded, there's been a budget issue in her district that is unfolding. So, you know, people are going to Google and see that there's a budget issue that is unfolding and, of course, causing a little controversy. Just very quickly, result of a 2019 audit, solvable problem according to the paper and according to Mary Beth. So happy to have you talk to the auditor about the issue, but just so you know that that's out there and don't get home and find that everybody Googled Mary Beth and is Googling you.
Dorothy, is this, is that a financial finding? Is it actual finding or is it?
It's a, it's a finding and just briefly, according to, you know, they had seven districts that were coming together and merging all their accounts at the same time. The state was also merging or changing their accounting structure, so that's part of the result of it.
Okay.
But it's not like a Marblehead issue?
It's not a Marblehead issue, no. But certainly something you would want to know about and probe as you are going forward. The second candidate is, I'm doing this in alphabetical order, strictly alphabetical order, Phil Conrad, who's the current principal of Marblehead High School. He's been there since 2015, former principal of Rockport Middle High School. I think he's maybe a familiar name to some of you. Yep. Former associate and assistant principal at Hamilton-Wenham, I guess, part one year at the middle high school and some years strictly at the high school. And was also the chair of the Fine Arts Department here and a teacher here, also has taught in Timberlane High School in New Hampshire. And the final finalist is Dan Richards, who's the current principal of Georgetown Middle High School, where he's been since 2018. He also has served as the principal in Belmont and in Melrose, and assistant principal in Belmont and Peabody, and was a department head and a teacher in Newton North. So you have all their full application packets to pour over. And just to let you know, the resumes in their packets are public documents. Everything besides the resume in that packet is considered a personnel document and is not public. So I know I had a question about getting information to the press. I will make sure that the resumes get to the press along with other information. So that takes care of the recommendations of the screening committee.
Dorothy, can you give us a sense of the deliberations to choose these final three?
A little bit hard, little bit difficult because they're in confidential executive session, but they, what they were looking at was matching the resumes of the finalists and using those interviews to determine where they felt there was a match to what the school committee was looking for.
So you say they were looking for a match. Two of our three names that were put forward to us don't have any experience as a superintendent, and none of the three, if I'm reading this correctly, have doctorates?
That is correct. Yep, yep. But in your brochure, it was master's, more education preferred. At least a couple of them, I think, have CAGs, which would be
Oh, they should all have CAG.
Yeah. And, and the amount of teaching experience matched what you were looking for.
So are there only three candidates?
Yes.
Three candidates that are being presented to us by
Recommended to you by the
Recommended.
Yep.
Right, it's important to remember that where the end-all be-all of the search.
Okay.
What's your quizzical look, Michelle?
There's only three.
Out of twenty-two.
I don't recognize one of these names. Well, I recognize Phil Conrad, but is there somebody missing from the pool?
I definitely think there's somebody missing.
Was this a unanimous, were these three unanimously drawn from the entire screening committee?
Yes. You know, there was a discussion of who to put forward, and the slate to put forward was a unanimous vote.
The slate was unanimous?
Yes.
Was the composition of the slate unanimous?
What do you mean by that?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Were there other candidates that were brought up as potential, a fourth or fifth?
Like when we do, like when we do things, we'll, like when we did it the last time, we went around and like, there was like five people, but only some had two or three votes, yeah.
At, yeah, at the start of the discussion, there was definitely differences of opinion, and then through the discussion, they whittled it down to a unanimous slate. That's typically the way it works in a screening committee?
I don't remember that doctorate wasn't put on our requirement. I don't remember that detail. I thought doctorate was one of our.
So that was something, we definitely discussed the wording.
Yeah, I think it was preferred. I'm pretty sure it was preferred. I mean, I don't think that's a you know, make or break thing, but
It's a
So
It's education, saying education is important is
No, it is, but I don't think, like, I think experience can make up for writing a paper.
I'm actually wondering if there's two names missing from this list.
So it, okay. All right, so the screening committee, like, was put together by us, but it didn't include us. And I think a lot of us, well, I know for me personally, I'm a little surprised, but I think, I mean, I'm sure these people are, I'm looking forward to meeting all of these people. I think this is awesome. I think to be able to have three choices is amazing. I did not recognize any of these names from the announcement from Peabody today. So, you know, it seems to me like all of these are, you know, people who, you know, will be interested in coming here, and I, you know, I'm interested in hearing from them, so.
I mean, you're making, I think you're under a good point, Michelle, in how is it, as a competitive district, are what is given to us right now tonight is in no way overlapping with the other districts right down the street from us that are also looking for superintendents that are, as a Homer pride-like person, in my opinion, not as great as our district, not dissing their district, just saying how awesome our district is. Two different things.
Well, I'll say, I'm a little, I'm just, I'm more than a little bit surprised that Dr. Kuchenberger isn't a finalist in this set, frankly.
I agree.
So I know, do we, I don't know if we have to talk around it, I guess, but I am too. And I guess my assumption was that she would be part of this final selection?
Well, I think, again, it's important, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but that these were what was put forward to us as recommendations from that search committee, and at the end of the day, they're ours to approve.
Yes.
And add, I add to.
Well, and they are an advisory committee to the school committee.
Well, go ahead, because you were
No, 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 go ahead.
I, I mean, like, the advisory committee, which I realize, they read through all of this, and trust me, I'm so thankful I did not have to do this, and interviewed people. I know, like, you guys came different nights to help them, so they've done a lot of work, and I appreciate that, but, like, we've worked with Dr. Kuchenberger for a while and, like, know her, and, like, especially, I would say, over the last month and a half, we've been working with her a lot behind the scenes on, like, little, little details that are turn into, like, these things, and she's handled it really well. And I know, like, she's been killing herself over the last few days about all of the tough decisions to be made.
Right.
And she's done a great job with that. And, like, we gave her a review to let her know that we weren't displeased, and I, I don't know, I guess maybe, maybe we can say, like, we know her quality of her work, and we know her quality of work is probably, you know, up to par. I mean, I'm excited to hear about these other people and what they could bring to our district, but I think she's been doing a decent enough job to warrant at least being considered.
Right, I, I think that this board, in particular, is obviously privy to information, no, not information, but sort of just the nuances of everything that goes on in working with Dr. Kuchenberger, and since most of us, you know, besides Ty, who's obviously new, have been here at least two years, have now worked with two different superintendents to see, really have a direct compare and contrast, and also have, you know, lived through the June 30th to July 1, you know, fiscal fiasco, which was handled, I, I, I'm wondering if we're just not doing a good enough job actually saying how serious of a matter that was and how great Dr. Kuchenberger and Vinnie have been in actually saving this town hundreds of thousands of dollars in, you know, significant points off of your tax rate, you know?
Great, because they did the jobs of other people for several months.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, I don't know, I was really surprised here, you know, I'm sort of
May I say two things? I'm sorry. Do you want to go first?
Well, I just want to say, I'm, I'm surprised, and I'm a bit torn, because we know the work that Dr. Kuchenberger has done and Vinnie, but we also had said last year that we would let the community be involved in selecting the finalists for the superintendent. So we have given the charge to the screening committee, and it was made up of a diverse group of our community members, staff. I'm just torn. I, that's all I can say. I'm just torn, because I understand the work and the charge they had, and they did a great job with it.
I think there's, there's a way to say all of those, both of those things are valuable, that the screening committee was given this, a lot of work in an important role, but also, at the same time, knowing kind of the inner workings. And I'm, again, I'm new, but I'm really surprised her name is not on the list as a potential candidate. I'm sure, I'm looking at everyone, like, I think everyone else is too.
What I was going to say is, I guess, three things. One, I am keeping an open mind. I look forward to meeting all these candidates. I'm sure they're outstanding. But when we hired Dr., when we hired an interim superintendent, I was hoping for someone who would just understand the district from 30,000 feet. But she has gone into the weeds. She has gone into every blade of grass. She knows our district, all the intimate details of our district, all the details. She has blown, just absolutely astounded me with her knowledge. And the feedback that I've been receiving, having worked in the district, having lots of contacts in the district, teachers have given me feedbacks, custodians have given me positive feedback, the technicians, the finance folks have all said that she has an outstanding grasp of this district, so I'm just a little bit surprised that she's
And I think we should be clear, though, too, that it's not that a decision is made, but or that these candidates will not be reviewed equally, right? Because that's really important
Right.
To this process.
Right.
Right.
But I do think it's fair and probably right to have her part of this, the candidates.
Like, I'm, I don't, like, Phil Conrad was here, like, when my kids were really little, so I don't really know him, but I do know that he's been around for a while, and I haven't heard great things about him. I don't actually know these other people, but I, I know people in this district that I can call and find out about him, and, you know, I think, I can certainly understand being out of state and wanting to, you know, come back.
Yeah, I
I mean, is there, I mean, there's only three here. I mean, it's not like, it's not like they gave us five and
Right.
Yeah.
So, you know, the screening committee is still not the selection committee, right? Because it's
Right.
Because we still have to, we still have the obligation and responsibility of selecting the finalists. I think, even if you look at it from a, just a professional courtesy level, like, Dr. Kuchenberger should have one of the, one of the candidates be interviewed, honestly.
Yeah, and I'm
I would, I would suggest that we add Dr. Kuchenberger into the set as a fourth candidate.
Yeah, and that, honestly, that could have been my mistake in writing the charge.
I'm really wondering if
It was three to five.
No, but I, like I said, that she had to be interviewed, I, maybe I should have written it differently.
But thinking that it was, maybe it was sort of an automatic, that she would be
Right. I, I mean, I'm, it, it could be my fault, like, I might have
Don't be just a little over it, because we're here now.
Right.
We have three candidates that the screening committee has put forward to us, right? And, you know, we're going to honor the process.
I think absolutely we are.
I'm just going to suggest that we add a fourth candidate, which is Dr. Kuchenberger.
I agree.
So should we?
Can I anticipate your question?
Yes, please, Dorothy, thank you.
The screening committee is an advisory committee to the school committee. You are not obligated to take the recommendation. It is not unheard of for their recommendation to be altered. It's not necessarily the normal course of events, but it's not unheard of for the school committee to take the recommendations of the screening committee and alter it.
I'm sorry, say that last part again?
It's not unheard of for a school committee to take the recommendations of the screening committee and alter it.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that, sorry.
And we wouldn't be breaking the trust that we said last year in public, that we would, I guess not. We said last year we would open, have the public community be involved with the selection, and I guess we did. Obviously, we did, because they've brought us
No, and I know, I've said multiple times since then that, you know, it's a screening process and that the ultimate decision lies with this board. You know, we are devoted and sort of trained professionals of this, whose, you know, major charge is, you know, to hire and oversee the superintendent. That's what we were elected to do, so.
Can I add just one thing? I'm also surprised, you said, speaking of professional courtesy, I'm also surprised Eric Tracy's name is not on here.
That's what I was thinking, too, how we have two
He's dedicated a lot of his life to
How did you even know he's in the pool?
What's that?
So
How would you even know if he was in the pool?
No, in fact, I don't know. I just, I heard rumors a long time ago, but I absolutely do not know if he put his name in. You're absolutely right. I do not know if he put his name in. I was just making an assumption, and you know what happens when you make an assumption, when you assume?
I think that the privacy of the candidates should be
Okay.
Especially, I mean, maybe not so much someone that's here, but if people know of other people, we really shouldn't be
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Putting that out there, because it could put them in jeopardy in their positions.
Yeah, nope, you're absolutely right. I do not know if he was a candidate.
Okay.
So should we make a motion to accept these four candidates? How do we?
Well, I think we should make a motion to accept the report, and then we can make a motion if we want to add someone, right? Because I think we should honor, like, we've received information from a committee that's done work for us and that we're, we approve that we've received it.
Can I ask a question about one specific candidate here, Jan Richards? His application to the question, are you licensed as a superintendent in Massachusetts? He marked no.
Your, your, I'm sure he's eligible. The question is, are you licensed, but the
It does say he holds it, but
But it does say superintendent certification, but
Well, I can tell you, that is public information that you can look up right now.
Also, your, your advertising said licensed or eligible for a license.
Right, because if somebody is from out of state
Yeah.
Second question, are you eligible for licensure as a superintendent in Massachusetts? And he marked, he didn't mark yes or no.
Well, all of, none of
I don't have the full
None of them marked anything.
Look at this.
But the other two marked yes.
I'm not connected to him.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, you're right, sorry.
The second question would be no.
Yeah, exactly.
If you look in your packet
There should be a copy of it.
There should be a copy.
Oh, that's exactly what I would look up.
Yeah.
He's got
Superintendent, assistant superintendent, all levels.
Yep, and he's
He's got it.
Had it for a while.
Yep.
He's had it since '09, is that what that says?
Yeah, he's had it since '09, expiration '24.
So he is licensed.
He renewed it last year.
Oh, I wonder if he checked the box, thinking it was closer to the yes.
Send the no, I know, it's not really the best form there.
If you look, yeah, if you look at the box, the box for yes, the box for no is really close to the word yes.
Yep.
Just a guess, I don't, I mean, it's there.
We know he's superintendent.
It could be an indication.
He demonstrated evidence that he has
Yes, yes.
It's not an issue. It's just confusing.
Well, you know what? Good feedback for the person who made up the form for me, right back.
Oh, okay.
So should I make
It looks like you
So I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee accepts the finalists put forth by the Hamilton-Wenham Screening Committee.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to amend the motion to include Dr. Kuchenberger as another finalist. I'd like to amend the motion to include Dr. Kuchenberger as another finalist.
I think we're, the idea was we're going to accept the recommendation and then make a second motion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
With a thank you for their work.
Yeah, yeah.
With a thank, with a thank you for the screening committee's work.
Trust me, having gone through this last year, I know how tedious of a job this is, which is part of the reason why we...
No, but we should...
I also should...
We should write down that we should send them thank you notes.
Yeah.
Just, I know, I understand, having been part of last year, just to add that they had many more applications to look at than you had last year, too, so their work was even harder.
Yeah, no kidding. Okay.
And thank you, Ms. Presser, I know how much work you put into it as well.
Yeah, but at least we're paying her.
Not really.
I still think she goes above and beyond.
I think she gets the same pay, no matter.
She is fantastic.
So, we're all in agreement, I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wentham School District School Committee accepts Dr. Julie Kuchenberger as our fourth finalist.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think, I'm going to vote yes, I'll just say that, but I think we need to be clear that this is not a done deal. I mean, to me, the fact that she wasn't included means we've, A, got some great candidates here, and, you know, maybe we need to ask some questions when we go on our site visit.
Let's say another thing, yeah, we got to make sure our timeline's correct.
So, well, we also have that, too, so, so that's all I, that's all I just wanted to say, so...
I agree with Michelle, that accepting this is not...
It's not an indication...
Done deal, and that we really need...
And that I, I want these people to come, and I want to see them, and I...
Right, because obviously, there was something that made them stick out over the 22.
Yeah, and we, as we as a committee, need to take the recommendation of the non-recommendation from the screening committee and really explore that and see why.
Because, I'm surprised her name is not on there, but I also respect everyone that was on the screening committee. So, I, I respect their opinion, so there's something there that we need to keep an open mind about.
Did we have a second?
Yeah, we had a second, Peter.
Peter seconded it.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Do we have, so now moving on to the...
Well, now you've sort of blown my site visit schedule, but... So, I had a tentative site visit schedule, which we're going to have to figure out how to adjust a little bit to accommodate a fourth set of site visits. However... Well, it should be an easy one, true, but it means an extra time, that's the... So, I, I have a tentative schedule, and I, now that I'm sitting here thinking about it, I probably should have typed it up for you, but I didn't think about that. So, I have a potential site visit for going to Vermont on Monday the 16th.
Where Vermont is?
Killington. Oh, Killington, isn't it, it's not... It's in the Killington area. Uh, no, no, you know what, um, Woodstock. Yeah, Woodstock. Which is a little over two hours.
Yeah, she lives...
I want to get out of Dodge, so I'll go.
Making a two for...
I have two children at home, so...
You want to come, too?
I, let me check with Matt, but I would say that I could do that, yeah.
That's Monday?
Yeah.
That's Monday the 16th.
Yeah, I think, I have PT, let me check with PT guy first, though, because that's important.
Dr. PT guy?
Dan, but it's a weird last name, I don't know how to say. Let me check with Dan first.
Dan at Harmeling, available for PT. Do we know if the coronavirus, you'll let us know if it impacts their schools if they're open?
Come on, did we already word on all the emails today? My phone, my computer was blowing off today.
Well, you're less than 1,000 people, I don't, I mean, we'll, we'll take that as it comes, right? Yeah, we'll have to, as of earlier today, it was okay, okay.
There's nobody there.
The 18th to Georgetown. And the 19th to Andover.
I could probably do...
Andover, is that where the person is? I thought the person was in Georgetown.
Yeah, 18th to Georgetown, 19th to Andover.
Oh, is that where Phil Conrad is working at Andover?
Yes. Yeah.
I know Phil...
They have good policies.
Phil had expressed interest late in the interim position last year. I don't know if you remember.
Oh, really?
If you remember, I thought of upbringing, so...
Interesting.
It was actually Phil and Eric that were the two that expressed interest.
So, who wants to go to Georgetown on the 18th?
I could probably do Wednesday, I could definitely do Wednesday easier than Thursday.
Okay.
Are we talking about the 18th?
Yes, I'm talking about the 18th.
The 16th I can't do, I cannot do.
That's, so the 18th is in where, Georgetown?
Yes.
Is it, it's during school hours, right?
Yes, yes.
How long do these interviews usually...
So, what I, if you remember last time, we talked about... Whether or not you remember last time, we talked about the different stakeholder groups that you wanted to be able to talk to. So, it would be about, you know, by the time all the groups come in and out, it would probably be four or five hours.
It's like all day.
Yeah, it's pretty much a school day. A nine to one? I actually, I did have a bit of a conversation with Dan, and it might actually start a little bit earlier, like, right at the start of the high school day, so it might be a little bit four nine, that it would start, but in that range somewhere, yeah.
They've done early start studies and not done it, so they're still early. That I know.
I can do the 18th.
Okay.
I can do, so you might be done by one, or even earlier, yeah, okay.
Somewhere in that, you know, somewhere in that range, and then Andover on the 19th.
Thursdays are bad for me.
Mich... Yeah, I could go again, yep, Thursday.
I mean, that day works definitely for me, because it's a Thursday, so...
Okay, so, the Michelle and Michelle team again?
Yeah, I guess.
So, then, to come here, can I call on an audience member?
We don't have to do anything, well...
Vinny?
Vinny.
Vinny and I spoke earlier today. We spoke earlier today about site visits here, were you able to...
Yes, the only conflict was with the middle school, but I think if we flip the timing with the middle school and high school, we should be okay.
So, any of the days we talked about would be okay? Okay, so what we talked about for here was having someone come here on the 13th, but have their community meet and greet on the 16th, so that we were working, you know, trying to squeeze everything in as quickly as possible, because the 16th here is a PD day, so it's not a good day for a visit. The school committee does not need to be involved in the days they are here. Right, they're just, they're getting hosted by, maybe by a school committee member who's there to greet them, but basically, they're going from school to school and getting a chance to visit, so it's not, I mean, these are days that you don't have to worry about whether or not you're free, because they're here. Does that make sense? Okay, so we talked about the 13th with the community meet and greet, on the 16th also gives the community a little more time to know that there's the meet and greet.
Right, to get babysitters and everything like that.
We didn't talk about where that would happen, we need to talk about that.
The only conflict, they might do that at the end for our...
But if we had it, like, at the high school auditorium, you could spread people out. I mean, I'll tell you, I came to the meet and greets when, the last round when they hired Dr. Harvey, there was maybe 15 of us. It was during the day, though, which I think was a mistake, because it really cut out the opportunity for anybody who had a job to participate, but...
Yeah, we, we talked about, like, 5, 6 o'clock.
Yeah, like, 6-ish, maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
Which I know I could have planned that.
Maybe the auditorium, because that would be really spread out if people were concerned, they could definitely sit in the back and...
And then the 17th and the 18th.
Would be for...
Would be for, so that would be the three, those would be the three days that the candidates will come, the 13th, the 17th, and the 18th.
Okay, okay.
To Hamilton-Wentham, and part of the reason that I'm focusing...
16th, 17th, and 18th, right?
No, 13th, 17th, and 18th.
18th would be them coming here.
Yes, yes, yeah, you don't have to, yeah, yeah.
All right, yeah, no, I had that completely backwards.
So, and then, when would we be interviewing?
So, the inter, so my, we, we talked about doing interviews on two nights, right? So, the 18th and the 19th would be available for interview nights. And part of the reason I was looking at the 18th, it's the best day, actually, for Mary Beth Baniels to come here, and then she could be, she wouldn't have to come here once for the site visit, and then drive all the way back for the interview, she could just be here the whole, and only have to do one day.
And so then, in theory, we could make our decision on the 19th?
In theory, you could make your decision on the 19th. Somehow, we're going to have to...
Is the 19th or the 18th?
The 19th.
The 19th, because you do interviews on the 18th and the 19th, so we could make our decision on the 19th.
On the 19th.
Which could be good, because I did, I did look up Melrose, I'm just saying, and there... They originally were going to do it that week or the next week, but then they were later announcing, but it also looks like they're still trying to get it done in the week of the 16th, so...
I can also tell you, I wondered why I had that big word Bedford written by somebody. Phil Conrad is a finalist in Bedford, they're deciding after.
Okay.
Can I ask, are we going into, it sounds silly to ask, but if we're going into, are we going to our schools to ask people about Dr. Kuchenberger? Well, that's, so that's what we need, that's what, that's why I said you blew my whole site visit schedule, because generally, when there's an internal candidate, you want to have that same opportunity.
Yeah.
So, we need to figure out if there's days that we can sort of replicate those things.
16th.
Could be the 19th.
Could be the 19th, because you're having an interview on the 19th, yeah, that could be.
Could be the 19th. And that's Thursday, right? Yeah. Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
We'll be in Andover, potentially.
Well, Andover would be...
Yeah, you guys would be in Andover.
Oh, so there'd be two site visits on that day.
Yeah.
One in Andover, one here. What's, why no site visit on the 17th here?
Those were the, oh, we could do the 17th.
Is that the Wednesday?
Tuesday.
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 Wednesday, there is the early release, so they might not be able to get to Buca at the end of the day.
On the 18th?
Is that the Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there any chance that this...
Oh, wait a minute, that's visiting here, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct, sorry.
I don't think...
Oh, the eight, so that would be Baniels.
Wait a minute, this is them coming here, right?
The...
This is the candidate coming here.
Right.
This is us coming here, them coming here, so the candidate from Georgetown is scheduled to come on the 18th.
No, 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 you're scheduled to go to Georgetown on the 18th.
Right, so it's okay if we come here on the 19th, on the 17th, we can come here on the 17th, right? Oh.
Yes.
But this person's coming here on the 17th.
Yes.
That would be awkward. No, it wouldn't, that's not awkward.
We would just know their schedule, and we'd do the off, we'd do it off.
No, it's not, really, because those people would be meeting, those people will be meeting people, and we would be meeting people, but they wouldn't necessarily be the same people.
Why, who's in 17th?
It's like, who's on first?
I think I have a map here, but now, I'm like, I have, the 17th looks blank on mine.
The 17th, because there's no involvement for you on the 17th.
Okay.
That's why it's blank for you. You're only, you're only down for the 18th.
Okay.
To go to Georgetown.
Right.
The other, the 17th would be someone here, be the Georgetown person actually here.
Okay.
So, the question is, should we, we have a site visit to this location on the same day that a candidate is also visiting here? And I don't think that that's necessarily a big deal, because we could not even be in the same buildings at the same time if we schedule it correctly.
If we're trying to get this done in a week, I don't even think there's any way we couldn't...
But the, and I think the other thing is that, usually when there's an internal candidate, I really want them to have the site visit both ways, right?
Yeah.
So, but Julie could sort of do her site visit to here on the 19th, if she was interviewed on the 19th.
Yeah, okay.
So, you're talking about which day?
So, 17th is a Tuesday, we would come here.
Yes. Okay, got it.
Now that I have a kid at home, I can get pretty much anywhere I want.
So, can, so is the 18th early release for all schools or just some schools?
Well, all schools, but the elementary is at 12:40 or 12:55, or something like that, and then the high school's at 1:30.
1:30. No, 1:30.
12:15.
Or could you flip it, so that Buca was earlier in the day, and...
We can flip it, that candidate just might not get a chance to have lunch, but...
Oh, well.
They can have lunch at 1:30, get a snack bar, grow up. Well, I'm just...
Okay, so we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll figure out the 18th, okay. Jean comes from work sometimes and doesn't get dinner till 9, 9:30, it's... Okay, we're going to make all that work.
It's like, in your 20-hour days.
Stick a comb. Okay, I will get in touch with the candidates and confirm all that, then.
And then you'll send an email to all of us?
I will send an email to all of you.
Addresses and...
Yep.
So, I know where I'm supposed to be.
Because that is far away, like, I do actually, my, my, my brother and sister-in-law live in Randolph, so I'm pretty familiar with that area, but, yeah.
Okay, so, that brings us to, in your folder, I had two things. One is, beyond the, beyond the resumes. One is the draft questions that you all sent to me. There are 21, so that's kind of too many. And I also included the questions that the...
21, I thought I was only supposed to send one, was I supposed to send more?
You're an underachiever.
It's a good question.
It is a good question, I'm not...
No, I think, I think it was like one or two.
Okay.
And then, I, so, I don't know if these are on here, but I went to those community ones, too, and I was like, looked for patterns, because, you know, I have a little bit of time right now, between PT, and, so...
So, the other thing that's in there that looks like this, these are the questions that the screening committee used, just so you know the ones that they asked.
Oh, that's super helpful, I was wondering about that. Yeah, because I was like, do you want to ask the same questions?
Well, so...
For some ways, but maybe not.
So, I, we did talk about, so I don't know how far you want to bring this tonight, because we did talk about meeting early before the interviews, so that the questions weren't floating out there for the world to know, since you're at a public meeting, so I don't know how you want to...
No, we can't, but...
No, you can't.
I think, are we going to make the list tonight, or?
I think we can make the list tonight.
I think we're going to make the list tonight.
So, just, you're...
No cheating.
So, you're heavy on budget questions, that's...
It's been a long year.
Yeah. Just so, because I think, actually, I think you sent some budget questions in case Stacy didn't have a chance. Yeah, so that might knock some off right away. And if the interviews last roughly an hour, 12 to 14 questions, as long as they're not five-part questions, is, is a reasonable number to have.
So, were the, so do we get any feedback from the screening committee of these three candidates?
No.
You can during our site visit.
No, he means the people that just interviewed.
No, any, any, any discussions that they had...
Three candidates.
Say that again?
About the three candidates, we don't get any...
No, any discussions they had about any of the candidates took place in executive session, so... So, you get, their recommendation is what comes out of the...
Is it ever made public?
Can we take a minute to...
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely.
See if we can sort of bunch some things together.
I changed, you meant, what had decent, you meant decent.
Yeah.
Okay, I just-
Did I, I may have not heard this, is there a target number that we want? You said we have 21, and that's a lot.
Yeah, I think you probably went 12 to 14.
Thank you.
And I think you, you know, knowing that there's a lot of budget questions, I might be able to knock-
Yes.
Combine or knock some of those out pretty quickly.
Do we wanna start with the category or just?
So, that's what I was just gonna say, I'm a slow reader, so just give me a second, but the, um, we broke, you know, you guys did a good job of breaking it down into categories to think, you know, so we could sort of think about the topics that we wanna cover and make sure that we're covering all those bases, and then add a couple extra from there. It is probably the best way to go, or one category, like the budget, should maybe have-
Yeah.
-two or 13 questions.
There is one budget question, um, that was asked, that, in this list, that actually was asked by the screening committee. Doesn't mean you might not want to ask it to hear the answer, but just so you know, it was, it's on the bottom of the first page, the, um, under Michelle H.'s, "The citizens of our community command, demand value." That was also asked by the screening committee.
With all the subsets, too?
Left the subsets more as follow-ups as needed.
Do you think it's valid that we already asked it and ask it again, or can we strike that and do a different one?
I'd like to know what the answers are.
We don't know what they said.
Okay, perfect. We don't know what they said, yeah.
We don't know what the answers are, so I still wanna know.
So keep my question, please.
It's a good question.
So. I'm lost, what are we doing?
Do you wanna go by, I mean, if you go by person, you're going by category.
Okay.
Because you all had specific categories assigned.
Some had two, awesome.
Yeah, yeah, a couple of you had two.
So, this one here, that, this first one that Stacy has, so when I went through the community ones, somebody had like an amazing question, which was, well, they didn't put this part in, "Their, their started at what?", but I was, I put this part in. "After visiting our facilities, what recommendations would you have for our, modernizing our facilities and providing a physical environment that will foster learning? And what would you see as our most immediate need?" Because it gets, I don't know. That was something somebody had asked, and I thought they, that was a pretty well-thought-out question. Does it get to anything that's different than what Stacy's is?
What brings up athletic, Stacy talks about athletic fields.
So maybe we should, mo- modernizing our facilities-
And experience and-
And athletic.
Yeah.
Maybe athletic facilities in buildings or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Or, or does it get at the same information, it doesn't matter?
No, I thi- I think it's a goo- I think it's a good question to add, I think the athletic facilities is a particularly good addition to it. I'm in, I'm interested in also knowing the how, right, how do they do it? Not just identifying what the issues are, because I think that's, that's-
Right.
You walk around the building, you can sort of see how crummy some of the buildings are, but it's like, how do you then address it? Like, what do you, what in your estimation would be like the first five things that you need to try to do? And it doesn't need to be like the ramps, the, I wanna know, like, we need to understand what the needs are, what the plan is, build consensus, financing, da, 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 whatever it is, I don't know, I'm making that up, but the wh- how is also really key.
So, so that's in Stacy's question, so maybe my, it was just that, in that one question that somebody, they talked about modern learning environments.
Yeah, no, I like, I like that part, that's what I like about it.
Based on kind of some of the stuff that we've been through this year, that we might wanna not be just like, oh, we don't, we, we know that there is cement on the wall, that, or tile on the walls and cement on the floors, and it's backwards. We, we wanna know, like, how to make it a learning environment.
Well, could the community question be a follow-up question to Stacy's?
So, can I-
Is it something that we can just key as an answer, something that we're looking for in the answer, right?
Okay, yeah, we should maybe, yeah.
I think that sort of kills two birds.
Yep, so we should just, can you put a star next to it?
Yeah, I most certainly can.
For our papers that we're looking for a learning environment?
Yeah. So we're leaving, leaving Stacy's first question with a-
Yep.
Okay. Got it.
I like, I like our second question, too.
That's not, I mean, you could say that that's, I mean, it's a good question, I wouldn't necessarily say it's a budget question either.
I don't care if there's more than one budget, like, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to come out of the reverse.
But I think it covers more-
But I think, I, I-
It's, it's not just strictly a budget question.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's really key to our district and our needs right now, like, we're in a very tight fiscal, you know, and with a lot of needs for our district to keep performing at the level that it is, you know, within these financial constraints, it's, it's 98% of the job, you know, it really is.
Well, and it also talks, you know, it also, it's develop, it's develop any kind of program-
Right, right.
That, that saved costs, whatever it was, whether it was like reorganizing the preschool, or change the paper towels that you used, and it saved us whatever.
Right.
Or you got rid of our packets at $85 a meeting, or whatever.
I'm putting that on my, all my future applications.
Saved $85 per meeting.
Per meeting.
Okay, so we're keeping those from Stacy?
Yeah, I like those two questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, Jean. I think Jean's second question is really good.
It's-
I'm not, I'm not against the first question, I'm just saying, I think the second question, I just have, now I have to think about it a little more if it's-
The second question's a little deeper of a dive. You know, the, the, the first one, sort of that, I don't wanna say it's a generic question, but it's more sort of, they get that everywhere, and I didn't mean it to be. But that, the second is, you know, like, oh, I will work positively with all stakeholders, you know, um.
Yeah.
But I mean, e- especially in, in, it's unique to, again, our, I really think that we wanna be, to give all these candidates a fair shot, we need to make sure that we're asking the questions that pertain to our districts in the very specific needs of Hamilton Wenum. So, so-
So let's do for sure two, and then come back to see if we're gonna do one?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
To your point, if you ask two, it's, the answer should include the-
One.
Should include one, yeah.
Yeah, a good answer would include one, I don't know.
Yeah, no, we'll put Peter.
Michelle, on your second one here, I was on an interview committee here in the district once, and somebody came up with this question, which was, "Tell us about a time you've had to ask for help." And it's so interesting, like, a, a lot of people at this level, a lot of times, won't do that. And so it's really interesting to see what they ask about, because it's not necessarily a weakness, but it's like, maybe realizing you're overworked and you have to delegate more. Maybe it's-
Right.
"I'm not a good speller and I have to find a", you know, whatever it is, um, like-
I feel attacked.
It might be a different way to get at that same thing that you're looking for, is that what you're looking for with that?
Yes, yeah, because it's easy, it's easy to say, "Tell us about your greatest accomplishment." So this is, where, where can you work, you're always, you should always, as a person, as an educator, as a professional, you should always be pushing yourself to grow.
Yeah.
So that was-
So it's almost like, can you tell us about a time you've had to ask for help and how it helped you grow as a professional?
Yep, perfect.
I hope you're writing these down for us, thank you. And over there, too, we have our special minute taker today.
My first question, was that asked, it seems like it was asked in, um,
Yeah.
During the search committee about core values?
I wonder if that should almost come out in an intro.
Yeah, I think they should be saying that in their introduction.
And if not, that's a red flag.
Because we're asking them to answer that question, or because we assume that they're gonna respond to the core values as an educator?
I think they're gonna say that in their introduction.
I don't think so. I don't. Assume nothing.
So are we-
The challenge, I think the challenge, the challenge I had is that, all the questions that the screening committee asked, I wanna ask again. Because I wanna know the answer, I don't, because if we don't get feedback, I understand.
Can we summarize those and, uh, that I read through?
Or can you get ones that ask, hit the same topics but ask the question differently?
Or could we send them in advance, like, in your introduction, these are things we would like to hear?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Yep.
Yep, that's a good way to do it.
You know, yeah, so, and, so, so far we have a list, "In your introduction, we would like to know about your core values, why you're seeking to be a superintendent and specifically here."
Just don't add so many things to the introduction that you're halfway through the interview before you get to start asking questions.
Is there anything else we'd want them to do in their introduction?
So we're crossing out the core, we're crossing out the core value because we're gonna ask for it.
If you give, if you give them a little bit of a heads-up of what to include, that sort of might even put them at ease and,
Yeah.
You know, to sort of know where we're coming from, hey, we want others right up front.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
Well, and, and so then do we want an observation, have them include the observations from their visit, or not really? Because we just know it's gonna be like, oh, it's amazing here.
Right.
Except for the building.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, so no, okay.
I mean, unless you think someone's gonna say, "Yeah, it's horrible."
I think, just-
No, they're not.
Right, I know, that's what I mean.
I think you wanna find out if they weave observations into their answers.
Okay.
If they, if they can make that connection.
Their star.
Moving on to the, the budgetary financial, my first question, I think we can, um, get rid of that one.
Excuse me.
But the second one, we talked about, could be kept. That's pretty, the first one's kind of mundane, I mean.
Do you want, at this point, uh-
So is compact the right word there?
I don't know that that's the word that you're looking for. I think you're looking for something that, what were you looking for by compact and efficient?
Read the way it was, um, I know that the screening committee spent some time thinking about how to phrase that question.
Concise? No?
Tangible?
Understandable?
Right.
I don't see the budget question.
I don't either.
It's the very last question.
Oh.
It's a six-part question.
I think, yeah, could you, could we do that? Could we just use that number part?
It's a six-part question.
Well, but what, but what they did, David, what they did was ask the basic question, and then use those bullets as follow-ups if there were parts missing.
Okay, so-
From the answers?
Yeah, from the answer.
So if they didn't talk about working with-
As a prompt to, for more of an answer if they didn't hear.
So here's the thing about this question, I mean, I like the question, but I think we need to think about the, the audience, right? Because the last part of it says, "Tell us how you ensure that the budget and capital plan you and the school community present will be responsible as possible."
Right.
Responsible to the community is different than responsible to the school district community. You know what I mean? So, I think we need to figure out, like, where are we trying to, where, where do we wanna go with this particular question?
So you could, if you wanted to, you could say as responsible as possible in balancing the needs of the district and taxpayers, or something along those lines. Or you could leave it as responsible and see which-
What they think is the priority.
Which way they-
Yeah, I mean, I'm not the, I'm not the final judge on the question here, but it's like, I don't like that. I wanna know specifically, what are they gonna get to, right? That's just me.
Well, I think I do, like, I do, I wanna know how they're gonna develop the budget, I do wanna know who they're gonna solicit the input from. I do wanna know what experience they have, like, in the political realm, because that, that's not necessarily a skill set you have.
Yeah, it's not.
You know?
Right.
How do you build consensus, I actually have another question that I like around that, um, but I think that's important here. And then, how do you handle capital planning? Maybe we've already asked when we ask about the building, but I think they're all good.
I think they are, too.
How do you wanna word it?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that this is a bad question, I just think, like, when you say, "Build a responsible budget", responsible budget means something different to everybody.
Well, why don't we just call it a budget?
It's fine.
Because then they can say, well, the first, they can say, "The first thing I consider is whether the needs of the district", or they say, "The first thing I consider is what can the oka- community afford", or "The first thing I consider is what do my principles still", and like, that would be good, because it will tell us how they set their priority, yeah.
Because I think if you leave questions open-ended, you'll get more honesty from someone. And we can follow up with questions if we feel like there's huge gaps of information.
But that's why I wanna be careful about having 14 multiple-part questions.
Well, exactly.
So you can have that opportunity for a follow-up.
But I think this one-
This one's-
No, no, I am, but I just wanna make sure that we're-
Well, and the other thing you don't wanna do is, is-
Come on, it wasn't even a budget talk!
Where are the drinks, and we'll meet you there? Oh!
Oh!
Todd, it's a little hard to hear us.
So the other, I mean, the other thing that you don't wanna do is have such a tee-up in your question that you telegraph the answer you're looking for.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean-
Okay.
I think we wanna give people the opportunity to lead us in some ways, so that we get actual feedback.
So it, I mean, judging by that, you could just ask question A, "How do you develop the district budget proposal?" Jean wants more.
I, I want more, I want, I want all the sub-part questions, frankly, because, you know, I, I-
I mean, 13 is fine, and just have it say, "Tell us how you will ensure, our compu- tell us how you would develop a budget."
And capital plan.
Right?
But is, I, is there, is there a problem with ask, is it an issue to ask follow-up questions?
No, but what I'm saying is, we don't wanna have so many questions that we don't have time for follow-up questions. You know, we, we're better off sort of leaning towards 10 questions and giving us time to actually have a conversation.
Well, do you wanna, do you wanna say something like, "Tell us how you would develop a budget and prioritize the needs of the-"
Let's, let's work backwards.
Prioritize needs?
What's the answer we're looking for?
Well, I think we're looking for a lot of ans- I think Jean's probably looking for a different answer than I'm looking for, so that's why I think-
And I think that's sort of part of his-
I'm looking very, very, for a very thorough answer, because ultimately, the budget, even the budget development assumes, it consumes, you know, from, it, it consumes, what, six months of the entire year?
Right, and then you also-
Basis, and like, that's a majority of the time-
That's a good year.
In a school year, I mean, it is a primary function of what we need to do, and also, it built, again, the budgets are priorities of, it demonstrates the priorities of what we, the district, the community, the, the population of the community, the school population wants.
Right.
Right? So if we think our schools are fine in the conditions that they are, then we're not, you know, it's gonna demonstrate core values, it's gonna demonstrate this, that, the other. I mean, you, I don't know how to get that in this one question, and I don't think that's reasonable to do that, but I wanna be able to sort of ask, and I can ask the follow-up questions if I don't feel satisfied, so I don't, I don't wanna belabor this one, but it's like, but I, I do think, like, just asking, I just sort of feel like asking a too-open-ended question of like, "Tell us about your, how you develop a budget", I just don't think it's, I just don't think it's enough. I don't know what the right an- right answer, right question is, but it just seems to be so open-ended as to be almost irrelevant. That's just, that's just my opinion about it. So that's why I like the sub-questions, because it gets you to where we wanna go. So that's why I like the sub-questions, because it gets you to where we want to go. It tells us, how'd you develop it? What input did you solicit? How do you sell it? How do you prioritize? And blah, blah, blah. Right?
Yeah, but I, so I think, so that's a little bit different than here, right? So we have how, how do you develop it? Whose input do you solicit? Right, that's not C. How do you build consensus? And I completely forgot what your last one was.
How do you prioritize?
How do you prioritize?
All right, so can we ask how, you know, how will you develop a budget and what your, what will your priorities be? I think leads people down the road.
Or how have you developed a budget?
Right, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
How do you currently...
How did you develop your budget this year?
Right.
And what were your priorities?
And how did you...
Or how do you come about your priorities?
How did you come about your priorities and whose input did you solicit?
I know, that's what I'm saying.
No, no, but...
I think we should just ask it, that's, that's what's written here.
But no, I think what we just did was take that, narrowed it down a little, but got, we're getting at the root of what we want in an answer.
Yeah.
Like, yeah.
Am I wrong?
No, I think, I do think you need a little bit of a lead-in here, like what Michelle has here. The citizens in our community demand value for their tax dollars and transparency in fiscal accounting. Therefore, a budget is very important to us. Explain how, yeah.
Including capital planning.
Yep.
Now, I don't think it's...
No, so you have a capital planning question already.
Yeah, yeah, capital.
Input, build a consensus, and prioritize. I think those should be the four subs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's...
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
So can I, can I summarize what I think you have?
Yes.
No, thanks. Are you taking the, are you taking the initial lead-up?
Michelle's initial.
Okay, so the citizens, our community, demand, and are you taking what the screening committee had?
A, B...
No, 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 no. Are you taking what the screening committee had?
Yes.
Not exactly what Michelle has here. Changing it to what the screening committee had.
Right.
Okay. And then, and then...
A, B, D, and then adding prioritize. Crossing out C, crossing out E is how I took that discussion. How do you develop the budget? Whose input do you solicit? On number 13?
Oh, I'm looking at the...
It's okay.
Okay, so, so A...
How do you develop it? Whose input do you solicit?
Yep.
How do you build consensus? And how do you prioritize? Not necessarily in that order.
D.
C and D. Oh, no, he left off C and E.
He left, so it's A, B, C.
So...
Yep.
We did touch on those being the priorities here.
Yep, so the three things, so the three things are...
Necessarily cutting them out, but in the answer.
No, we're just, we're record-keeping.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I'm like, no, no, I have nothing against that, but...
Yeah, so priorities, building consensus, and whose input do you solicit? Those are the three things, right? Okay.
You know, the, the town government, you kind of, maybe hope comes out in the answer a little, right? But I don't think we, we don't want to spoon-feed that one necessarily.
I think you're right. I think you're right. Okay. Okay.
No, I didn't even see that you had letters on the back.
And we have five questions so far.
Yeah, so when I, when I look at Peter's, this was in the community one.
It was.
What steps...
Number nine.
Will the super, will they, I guess it would be what steps will you take to continue the important conversation about what is learning in our strategic blueprint? How do you envision assisting the creation of meaningful strategic plan and goals?
Which, which one was that?
Do we want to ask something about that since we just spent the year looking at that? And just approved a strategic blueprint? So that we know if that work is going forward or not? And I'm only saying, it came up twice in the, in the ones that people submitted.
Which numbers?
So, so when you're talking about here, how would you describe the teaching and learning environment? So something that someone submitted in that online survey that we did...
Oh, in the online survey.
Asked about what steps would you take to continue the important conversation about what is learning from our strategic blueprint? And how do you envision assisting the creation of meaning, a meaningful strategic plan and goals?
For equity's sake, by specifically referencing the strategic blueprint, you're automatically assuming that in all the research everybody's doing, they happen to go through that and thoroughly take that in.
Okay.
That's a big ask. And it's sort of geared to, one person's gonna have a really good answer for that.
So, do, well...
But is it, but is it though? I mean, don't you think in their research, I'm just, in our...
They should come across it.
They should know our strategic blueprint.
They should come across it, but at the same time, they're, they're...
I know.
No, no, no.
Studying for this huge final exam and, you know, it's a pretty substantial list that we're, to ask a very specific question like that is...
But we could ask something like, could you explain to us what learning is?
Right. And so that's, I'm much more comfortable with an open-ended question like that, because then we can actually see if their answer coincides.
Well, and it gets to what you're looking at here, Peter, right? Like, do you, or not? Do you think the learning, teaching and learning environment is different than asking what is learning?
Right.
Because I honestly don't think anybody really has an answer for that, but it, it kind of would sort of tell us what this person's gonna be looking for from our teaching staff.
That's what I'm saying. Are they, are they in line with what we're, you know, we got as feedback?
My second question is in line with the, the other question that was asked.
Absolutely, yeah.
So it's up to, I like, I like, if I had to choose between the, the two, I would go with my first one, but just something that's near and dear to my heart.
So what if we take that first one and then add...
Part of the second one?
That, that second one could either be a little bit of a follow-up or something that we're looking for in that answer. You know, what is it? You know, like, so I'm trying to think of, like, from interviewee perspective, and, you know, like, you get thrown this huge question like this, maybe it's like, well, you know, it's like, well, what are we gonna be looking at, you know, when you're answering? Like, what does a graduate look like in five years? You know, and what is it, what is a Hamilton I'm specific graduate look like? And then all of a sudden, you're starting getting into that, I think, the thought process that we're looking for. Right? We want, like, a really big educational thinker.
Yeah, I just realized the second question can be answered in the first one if they...
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It, like, it really, it can be, and like, if they start hitting that, you're like, ooh, yeah, all right, good answer, check that one off.
So we're going with the first one?
Yeah. Did we touch on this on one of the earlier questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we think we need to go about it again, or are we set for...
Nope.
Okay.
Get rid of that. Get rid of the first one, financial limitation.
I like the third one that you have there.
Yeah, I think you asked that question, didn't you? Or no, so...
That's a great question, jeez.
Yeah.
What are you trying to get out of, out of the second question? I don't want to skip over that, because it seems...
Well, we've gotten a lot more communication from this superintendent, so, you know, even, even like, the bus thing, like, you know, was not a big deal, like, whatever. But we got that information.
Right.
Um, you know, is that, that may or may not be what it is, but that's fine. I mean, if we just want to go with the, that one, that's...
No, I want to make sure that, like, I think it's a really good question, and I think it's sort of a, a very good topic, it's very, very specific for sort of our group. So I want to make sure that the answer...
Or even, or even like this canceling the field trip stuff, like, that's high public interest. So like, you know, how would you handle that? So, so the way we've handled it is, we've had some discussions about how should we handle it? And then, there's been a letter. Right? So you would get an idea of, like, well, how would you handle it?
Right. Are you keeping us in the loop, so when people ask us outside?
Yeah, are we keeping us in the loop? Are we, are we seeing communication before it's sent out? Are we, are, are we, is the only time we're seeing it is when a friend asks us about it because we weren't at the school that it affected, or, you know what I mean?
So are you, are you trying to get to communication style, decision-making authority?
I think it's decision-making process.
They work with the school committee? It isn't going to be either or, it's just gonna be any one of those.
I think it's communication and decision-making process. I don't know. I just, I have to put a plug in for this one. There was a couple of things that came up a couple of times. One was, and this does not fall in my category, so it was, how do you know if an administrator's doing a good job? And what is the process for evaluating administration? And how do you solicit honest feedback? And then there, another one was, what would you do to make our schools more kind? And then the follow-up was, how do you, how would you work to eliminate systematic bullying, including stereotypes of gender identity and neurodiversity that often lurk under the radar of traditional anti-bullying curriculum? But I've had conversations with a couple of people, and they talk about, they've talked to me about a superintendent that was here, like, right bef, right as I moved into town. And I said, well, what was it about that person? Like, people always talk with reverence about this Pat Aldrich. Why? And their answer was, she just thought that kindness was a priority. And so I just feel like our community wants to emphasize that, so I, but I don't necessarily want to feed that to them. You know what I mean? But like, how do you get at, and because it, but it's almost a social, emotional question, but I didn't know how to do that, so, you know?
It could be something, you know, oh, I don't know. Where our societal norms are always evolving and changing. How do you see education?
Shaping those.
Shaping, or, or shaping that so you're educating the whole child to, to...
I love that, though, but with our, social norms are always changing.
And evolving.
And evolving. How do you see education shaping?
Shaping or shifting with...
Or evolving with that.
I think it's shaping...
Yeah, shaping.
The, the whole child.
The whole child.
Yeah.
And it's all, and things start from children, perhaps, you know? So maybe it's, nevermind, I'm going off on a tangent here, but, and how would that influence the culture too? I, I mean, it's...
Yeah, 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 yeah. How do you, how do you influence the culture of a district could just be...
Well, I was just gonna say, my question sort of touches on that a little, and I think we're in the same, right? But like, it's sort of not, I didn't get as little, as deep in the weeds, but sort of, you know, because I was looking at it from more of an academic standpoint, but, you know, I, I do think that we're definitely, because that was the first thing that came to my mind when you guys said, you know, give me...
But I think the culture is the point.
I think the culture is the point. How, how do you cultivate culture? Or how, how do you...
And in ever-changing, or in a rapidly changing...
Yeah, because each district has a culture.
Right, can we say something like, what role does a superintendent play in developing a school culture?
Yeah, or how have, or how have you...
Or a district culture.
Or what culture or district culture have you, yeah.
Can you repeat the question?
Can you say it again?
Sorry, hi, the...
You have to say it again.
Okay, hold on. What role do you see a superintendent playing in the development of a district culture?
Or an inclusive culture? Is that what?
We don't want to put inclusive in there.
I don't want to say inclusive, because you don't want to...
You don't want to include it in there.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we want to know what their, what their, what their idea...
And what would your ideal culture be, kind of thing? Yeah. Because some people may say that their ideal culture is...
Like, competition.
Competition, or being the best, or creativity, or wellness, or, you know, whatever it is. Yeah.
So let me read this back, because I think, I think it would get to some interesting answers. What role do you see a superintendent playing in developing a district culture? What would your ideal culture be?
Yep.
Yes, yeah, I like the follow-up part.
Yep, okay.
And then you'll hear, we'll hear a lot about someone's values and where they see the school district.
Okay, so just the last one on mine, right? And then that question?
Yep. That brings you to eight questions.
Now we're top.
Anybody's counting.
Full disclosure, I left here thinking I should send, like, seven questions or something like that.
That's okay.
That's okay.
We like overachievers.
But not stressed-out overachievers.
Yeah, we all...
I like Ty's first question.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, I think it gets to an issue that hasn't been covered by any other question. Of, you know, sort of leadership, sort of.
Yeah, and how to engage.
Yep.
Is it...
Yeah, are we including?
But that one, yeah, I think so.
Do you want question one?
Ty's, Ty's first one?
I think that leadership philosophy will get inserted in the intro.
Yep.
Here.
I like the fifth one.
The second, is that the second one that is on...
The second page?
On the second page?
Yeah.
So, yeah, and actually, that came up in the community one. Describe a time when you have led, sort of.
Yeah.
Describe a time that you have led a team that had been reluctant to lead.
Yeah.
How did you overcome the reluctance and what were the results? What would you have done differently? And then, in the other way, someone else said that, was describe a time when you led a group of people to accomplish something in a school-based setting that was satisfying to you. Yours is more about learning from a failure, but...
And I think, actually, I think learning from a failure is the question, you know?
The weakness.
When you, you know?
Ask for a time.
Ask for a time when you ask for help. So I think that that's kind of covered already.
Yeah, so, I did like this thing about, like, how do you overcome inertia? How do you overcome inertia? Or, I mean, because, you know?
And it's not just.
I know sometimes where I work, sometimes it's difficult to make change, because people, it's hard. And it's very scary for people. And one of the sayings they have is, the only thing people hate worse than the way it is now is the way you want to change it. So.
Right.
So true.
But it's true, Jean, you're going to use that later on. You're going to be like, I remember that one, that one's good.
Yeah, no, I'm going to use that at work.
You're going to get it on a T-shirt.
Maybe GBA stands for we're good at being hard.
Do we like that? Describe a time when you have.
Yeah, I think it's a great question.
Yeah, no, that's a.
Describe the time, and actually, because it's right here on the screen, we could copy and paste it to you. Because I like.
You know what? That would be easier, because it's, I'm going to, for you to sit here while I write it. Can you copy and paste that to me then?
Yeah. Sorry.
I like the idea of asking about someone's ability to motivate people for change.
Yeah.
Right.
Some, like, something.
Because you feel like it gets to that.
Yeah, how did you overcome reluctance? What were your results? Yeah. You have to motivate people. There has to be a reason to change that's more than I hate the way it is now.
Yeah.
Like, those people that are, that have charisma, you know, the people that you'll follow anywhere, kind of thing.
So by my count, you have 10 questions now.
But we haven't got to David yet.
I know, I know, I'm just.
So, yeah, I remember the same.
I thought we had nine.
Okay.
Did I miss one?
The cultural one that went offline.
Six, seven, eight, nine.
The cultural one went off.
Oh, yeah, that cultural one was, that was good, though.
Yeah.
You should put that on the new M A S E ones.
We're talking about with Michelle Bailey, but it was the culture question, your ideal culture, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I have that one.
Do you have that one?
Yeah, I must be missing another one.
So, Ty's, and then the one we just discussed from.
Oh, that one offline, yeah, that's the one I did, have in front of me.
So, my question definitely tied back with, you know, that culture question, in a sense. But really.
Quite the same. It's not quite the same.
It's not quite the same.
But what I'm saying is specifically really looking into it from, you know, I think that part of the unique social emotional needs in education in this district is the competitiveness of the district.
I agree.
And, you know.
I think it's important to ask somehow.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I totally agree.
And that's why, you know, I put this out there, just sort of, just thinking about everything that's going on as my kids are getting older and I'm actually seeing it firsthand.
That question is almost identical to the one from the M A S E.
I did not.
Did you use that?
No.
It was almost like that. Let me see if I can find it.
Because we're saying, you know, with high academic pressure, how are you going to take care of students?
This is.
Like, some version of that.
Right, because I think it's important for us to, and nowhere in here have we addressed, they were a high achieving district and we expect to continue to be. But at the same time, we want to address all the shortcomings, I guess, that comes with that.
Well, why would you just not take that question?
Well, just because I'm, I was saying, it's open to you.
Yeah. No, I guess I'm asking everyone else, I think. People like the topic and it's, yeah. I would just, because it is, take out, could, take out the, what's the word I'm looking for? The present. No, what's the, what's the grammatical term I'm looking for? So instead of saying could lead, it has led to increased social emotional leads of our students. This is, we're living this now with our kids. They've seen it at the high school. So just, I think, just finesse it a little bit.
Just say leads, just say leads. This leads?
Yes, lead, right. And not even potential policies. What would you enact? What would you, you know?
How have you addressed this before? Or how would you address this?
Right. And I would maybe take it a step further and say, students and parents? Or is that reaching, too far-reaching? Because it, I mean, and it goes back to culture, too. I don't, or just keep it students.
I mean, it's like asking, Hamilton Wenham is a very competitive academic district. How would you care for the emotional wellness of our students? I don't know if it has to be more than that.
Yeah, the way it's in the M A S E, it's not as good as I thought, but it's, how do you view the social emotional well-being of children in the context of establishing a high-performing school population in the decade ahead?
I like Ty's better, actually.
I think Ty's better, yeah.
Either, I mean, but that's, like, that's the question, right?
Yeah. You have to say it again, though.
Just say it again.
Unless she got it written down, word for word.
Okay, Hamilton Wenham is a competitive academic district. How would you care for the emotional well-being of our students?
I can even do students, staff, and.
Yeah, yeah, of the district, yeah.
Of the district, yeah. Because, like, so the example, like, I had said when Lucas was like a sophomore or a junior, like, I was taking him to look at some colleges and one of my colleagues was like, why are you doing that? You don't need to do that. I was like, no, you do. I live in Hamilton Wenham, like, you have to do that, that early, because that's when you have to do that.
And that's.
And it's.
Oh, God.
Necessary.
I'd take my kids to B C for years now.
That's not the same. But yes, I know.
It is, they only get one choice in college. It's a tough limit in my eyes.
That sounds crazy.
It is crazy. But still. How many do we have? Eleven?
Eleven.
You have eleven.
We're so good.
That's eleven.
Yeah, I think we're really hitting a broad.
The only one, I just want to, because it's, there's something going on, because this was asked several times. How do you, like, how do you know if an administrator is doing a good job?
Yeah, so somebody's unhappy with somebody.
And how would you solicit honest feedback? It showed up three or four times.
Which is, I'm saying, no, it's.
But do we want to do, do we want to ask that? Like, how do you, how do you lead and help your team to have continuous growth and improvement? Like, like, how do you, how would you help develop the next leaders of this district? You know what I mean? Ideally, we have, as far as I can tell, have never promoted up to a superintendent, like, right? Like, how, how would you develop our staff to be the next leaders of this district?
Is collaborate the right word?
Well, is that the question? Is that what they're getting at? Or is it the opposite? Hey, how do you, when do you realize?
How do you get rid of dead weight? I don't know. Like, do you want to ask that? How do you get rid of dead weight?
Well, I mean, but it's like, you even have to say, hey, yeah, you know what? This district is filled with great educators.
Yeah.
We're not batting a thousand, you know? Like, how do you make those? Those are the tough choices, right? It's really easy to be like, dude, you're an awesome teacher.
How do you develop them?
Right? And it's hard to have the other conversation. And I think that's what people are trying to get to. Are you willing to have that? And how do you do it?
How do you develop them into meeting expectations?
You know, they're, oh, it's, you know, you said this earlier, you know, a great leader is surrounded, has smarter people around them.
Yeah.
So.
But you also have to make, you have to make the decision at some point to grow or go people, right? Say, you're not there, but we can work with you, or it's just not going to get there, we're not going to be.
We're never going to see eye to eye on this and we would all be happier in a different place, yeah.
Are we asking about how to manage people? Or are we asking about how to?
That's a good question. All right, manage or grow.
Develop, to me, it's develop.
Right, or grow, or both.
Yeah, I think.
So Ty had a question. Describe your leadership philosophy and how you would build leadership capacity at the school and district levels.
That was a good one. Why'd you let us skip over that?
I didn't see it. But that is, right, that is one of the things, though, right? Right.
That is it. That is the one.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, do people agree with that? It was Ty.
Yes, yep.
So, are we going to sort of be looking for a grow or go?
No, we're looking for someone who can develop all of our staff to be leaders.
Well, that's impossible to say you can get 100%, right? And I really, and so what I'm taking, but what I'm, what I'm taking from, from, you know, the fact that there's three or four people saying that, is there is a 1% here.
It might be.
Or somebody feels that there's a 1% here.
Or there's three people who feel they're the 1% and they are their grow or goers.
We know that 20, you know, 20 emails sways an entire.
Yes.
That's right.
You could, you could save a follow-up, right?
Yeah, but I like that question.
But that's what I was saying, like, are we going to do one of those? Hey, let's, let's sort of be looking for like a grow or go, you know? Because I think it is important to, one, realize when you have greatness, and two, realize that, one, it's not going to work out, right? I mean, you have to.
Or, just unfortunately, the needs of the district change and you have to reorganize.
Right.
That can happen, too. And how, how will you grow leaders? Because in reorganizations, again, it's.
But I think part of the, thinking about that question is, some of the answer is going to be, sometimes people are not able to take the next step. And this is what we do.
Right, I mean, that's really.
And that's what I'm saying.
I like this.
That could be, if you don't get that flip side of it, you could ask us a follow-up.
Yep, okay. How many questions do we have, Dorothy?
Glad we agree.
If you can't have 13, so we either need two more or stay at 12.
I would suggest staying at 12 and allowing yourself time for conversation.
I actually think we cover a lot here in, they're really well-developed.
So will you, will you make something like this for us?
Yes, yes.
So what do we need? What have we done?
Dorothy's going to compile all the questions for us. So the, what you saw in, you know, the thing that I said, this is what the screening committee asked?
Right, right, yeah.
I will do that for you with these 12 questions.
Understood, okay. Great.
But on only one side of the paper, so you have plenty of room. Trying to save a few pieces of paper when I printed those.
We're all about that.
Did we set a date now for the interviews? I believe the 18th. Eighteenth, okay. So two on the 18th, two on the 19th. Does that work?
Yeah, I think that means that our 18th meeting is probably not doable, given.
Other than any sort of COVID-19 update.
Yeah.
I don't, I just had the meeting yesterday. There was no, nothing very heavy on the agenda for that.
Yeah, so I think we should try and.
If you need a COVID-19 update, this whole thing might.
Might blow. Well, that's the other thing. So then, if this all blows up, do we want to try and do like virtual site visits but still have our meetings or, and interviews? Or what do we want to do? Well, those people might not be able to come here if we don't even have a school. So if that happens, then we'll just make another plan, right? And all of that is planning around agendas and meetings, so that can all be done offline? Yeah, okay.
At that point, we can, you know, maybe point out some key stakeholders, develop a list of questions and sort of get email responses. It's not ideal, but, I mean, if the world's coming to an end.
We did interview another candidate to be the person who helps us with us, and they did suggest that sometimes you can just make phone calls or do.
Right, right, right.
So, we could do.
I mean, yeah, sometime, sometime, occasion, like, I think there's value to those site visits.
Yeah.
Sometimes people don't do them. So if it, if that's what happens, that's, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah. It's going to be fine.
Yeah.
Bring your own hands out of time.
Yeah. Dorothy, will you provide us, just, I know this is another no-brainer, but just a list of things to be on the lookout for, just? Oh, yeah, I have a site visit guide I can, have I sent that already?
It was in the last one, but if you could resend it, just so that we have it as not part of a bigger packet of stuff, yeah.
Yep. Keep it simple for.
Past three days, I've only read anything with COVID-19 in the subject title.
I'll put site visit guide with COVID-19 in the mix.
The guide is wash your hands, don't touch your face, Michelle.
What?
I did wash my hands right before coming here, me.
I did, too.
It's so hard.
As soon as they tell you don't wash, don't touch your face.
But Michelle, I saw you lick your finger and turn the page, though.
Someone said to sing karaoke, or, right, I didn't read the full article, but it was sing karaoke while you're washing your hands.
All right, so I guess we're good then, huh?
Is that everything?
That's what was on my list.
All right. Anything else that we could think of?
So I will send you a site visit schedule.
Okay.
Once I fully confirm it with Vinnie. And you'll have the questions ready. We're starting on the, on the.
Oh, the interview time? Are we going to start at seven? Because, since we're only having two each night? So we do a seven to seven, or seven to.
So.
Are you now, my husband's on permanent telework for indefinite, are you?
Yes, so beginning the 16th, I am working from home, so I don't, you don't have to wait till seven.
How early can you go?
Do we want to go six o'clock?
Usually work ends at five, so by 30, 6, something like that, would probably be good.
Um, what date is that now?
What next one's on Thursday?
Just 17th, 18th. The only thing I'm thinking is.
Well, Wednesday, we have the site visit.
Yeah, the only thing I'm thinking there is, if we do on the, on the, the 18th and the 19th, if there's a community meet and greet that's going on, we probably don't want to start before six, or maybe a little past six, so that we can have the community meet and greet from like five.
So if it was at six?
Yeah.
We can have our, we can relocate to the auditorium, because the auditorium is wired just like this.
The candidate needs to be at the community meet and greet.
I know, but if we have the community meet and greet there, they can have that, and then we can go to that same location, so there isn't like a.
They'd have to come here.
They wouldn't have to.
They wouldn't have to come.
Truck down here.
Got it, got it.
So I'm saying this because Vinnie's going to set it all up, but. And he's going to tell Bill, I'm not, I'm just, that's a possibility. What, are we saying six?
Six.
So is the community meet and greet going to be five to six?
That's what we had talked about.
We had said five to six, but.
It seems.
Yeah, I wouldn't like to go back.
So another option that I've seen is where there's like, one group is doing one thing and then they flip-flop. I mean, it does mean that the community couldn't come to the, this interview, but if this interview was taped, we could do that. You know, like, that's six, the community's meeting candidate A for the night and we're interviewing candidate B, and then they flip-flop.
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't need to flip-flop. You would just have, you would interview candidate A while candidate B, because they're going to do it the same day as they're scheduled.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So, yeah, I mean, tell me what time you want to start and we'll make, Vinnie and I will make it work.
I feel like the, starting the community one at five is too early.
So I'm doing.
That's what I think, so.
It's the 17th and 18th?
Six, I mean, 18th and 19th.
18th and 19th, sorry.
18th and 19th for interviews, yep.
Oh, right.
I'm sorry.
Well, start the community thing at 5:30?
Well, I just think that's early. Don't you think that's early? But maybe not by that time.
You're talking to the wrong person. I don't know what's early, because I can't get back in town till it's seven.
I'm just thinking of watching how busy it was here on the open house night at.
Oh, that's, that's true, but.
So, I mean, people were doing that.
And when were the focus groups? What time were those at? Were those at seven or? Were they well-attended? Not really. Maybe, maybe we're making a big deal for 10 people and it's not a big deal. I don't know.
I think we should start at.
Three of our 10 have already interviewed these people.
I think we should start at six.
Us start at six?
Yeah, yeah.
So the candidate would have to start with the community at 4:30 or something.
Or not be, not be having the interview and the meet and greet on the same night. Tell me what time you want to start the interviews, and we will work out the logistics of the meet and greet.
Does anyone have a strong preference? Because six or seven, it doesn't matter to me. I'm fine, either way.
Yeah, six, because we don't want to be here late.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're better when you're fresher, right? So six o'clock. And, so six o'clock and 7:15, six o'clock and, okay.
Seven.
Is it on Wednesday and Thursday?
Yes.
Correct.
So Wednesday, do you have school meeting?
Not anymore.
So I'd be, you were taking notes, but I said, from what I remember, there really wasn't anything.
She, she sent us a draft agenda.
Major.
Yeah, we do have a draft agenda.
I mean, there was a policy thing on it, but it was, it is not urgent and it, that was okay, so.
So, just to be clear, are we meeting the 17th, 18th, and 19th?
We have the SOI, that might be timely. We have approval of the SOI on the 18th. And the approval of the student opportunity plan. And some donations, which shouldn't be too much. And we also have to approve the new, the bylaw changes for the North Shore Education Consortium.
Someone just wants to join.
Oh, really, for this meeting? Okay. So we just won't schedule her for that?
Oh, right, right, that is right.
You could, I mean, you could, if you're able to start earlier.
We could start and do those couple of things earlier, yeah.
Yeah, and still start the interview at six.
I think all of us could start now that Jean can get done at five, at 5:15, 5:30.
That's right.
So what if, so if we start at 5:30?
Yeah.
The first candidate can come in at 6:30. That way, we, if we have anything we need to organize, we can organize. We're still done by 8:30.
6:30.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah, 6:30, so then it would be 7:45 for the second one.
Yeah.
Okay.
6:30, okay.
Both nights or just one night? Just keep it easy? Keep it, okay.
It's hard for us to-
All right, so what do we decide?
Not a dime, you know?
Just checking, okay.
Next Wednesday, meeting here, 5:30.
5:30.
5:30, 6:30, school committee meeting.
And then 6:30, interviews.
Yeah, 7:30, second meeting.
So Vinnie, is Tom gonna come, do you know, to do the S O I next Wednesday? Yeah, so he is still coming. What about the student opportunity act thing? Are you doing that? Oh, that's a question mark, okay. Okay. Perfect. But we could do all of these donations and- Why are we revising the last day of school?
There was a miscount. Instead of the Monday, I don't know, I don't even know how this happened, but instead of the Monday-
On the one that we just messed up? The one that we just changed? That people are so mad about?
Yeah, I think so. But we actually get out a day earlier.
So wait.
So there'll be a little less mess.
There was an extra day? That's weird, because I count those suckers.
So I don't know how-
It's so hard to count them, though.
So one of the teachers pointed out that, so our last day currently is on a Monday.
And it should be a Friday.
So, yeah, and it was something like-
Well, I'm saying, I, I count them and trust me, it is hard to count, so I do not fault anybody for messing it up. It is hard, so.
Yeah, I know, I think it was-
Especially with the half day. Okay, perfect, okay. Then we should do that.
Each workshop day, or it's actually a half day.
But you're opening a big fat kennel worm.
Oh, I know.
So it needs to stay this way, that we're revising the last day of school. It needs to stay that way. People want us to revise the first day of school. We're not.
All right.
Well, I mean, I guess we could, but, okay. So you guys, all right, so Michelle, I'll confirm with you about-
I think I have what I need.
P T. I, I just have to call and see if I can reschedule P T and then I'll let you know, yeah.
We'll have to go visit my mother's cousins, too, while we're there.
Where are they?
They live in Woodstock.
Woodstock.
Right, and Mary Bushwell, we're coming up to visit.
Then we're gonna go to my sister-in-law's house, too, I'm from Randolph, while you're at it.
Yeah, we'll just make a whole family trip.
Make a day of it.
Yeah, we're fine. Go to Simon Pierce for lunch, we're all set.
So I want to make a motion?
Something to tell you about that.
I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wenham School Committee adjourns at 8:51.
Second.
All those are favored. Great job tonight, guys.